Hi, good morning, everyone, and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. It's Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. It is ten a.m. It's our final meeting of this fiscal year. And we're glad to be here and glad to have everyone here. Everyone's here this morning, so we have established the quorum in this meeting. It's called order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance, led by Commissioner Cooper this morning.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Fisher. Item number three is to consider and possibly approve the September tenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes presented by the county clerk. Have motion by Commissioner Young, said goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consider and possibly approve the following. First is to request by the county treasurer to cancel all registered claims from September tenth, today's cash statement, and then the quarterly report for the quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Good morning, Mrs. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-four cents. Cash report summary for today. In general checking account, we have five hundred twenty-one thousand, twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. First Financial Bank, general checking, special money market, nineteen million, four hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And tech school, general, three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars and seventy-five cents. For total in cash funds of twenty million, three hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-one cents. I apologize for the quarterly report being late. We had a little bit of problems with computers, and then I had a pesky penny that boreded me for a few weeks, but we got it. Our quarterly report for the second quarter of two thousand twenty-four, the balance of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, in general checking, one million, seventy-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents. In the special money market, twenty-four million, five hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred six dollars and thirty-one cents. Tech school, general, three hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents. For total in cash funds of twenty-five million, nine hundred seventy thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-four cents. The report shows a decrease in the cash balance for the second quarter of twenty twenty-four in the amount of three million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty cents. Other funds invested at tech school, the ARPA money, we have one hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. First Financial Bank, special money market, eight million, eight thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty cents. For total in funds of eight million, one hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve as presented, and said goodbye Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You want to skip down to number six, is that okay with you? That way you don't have to sit down and get back there.
Okay. Let me talk, say one thing.
Yep, sure.
And everybody's aware that the feds, they did cut the fed rate.
Yes, ma'am.
Five oh percent.
Mm-hmm.
I notice it's more than, that tech pool's down to five point oh eight. So those are going to continue to go down on the interest, so.
What were they before, five point two seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's got five point oh eight.
It was dropped five oh eight this morning.
Alright.
And that, you know, that special money market follows the tech pool rate, too.
Yes, ma'am.
So, be the same thing.
Alrighty. Number six, discussion and possible action regarding the annual review and approval of the Hardin County Investment Policy, requested by Mrs. McWilliams.
I didn't have any changes to the policy this year unless the court sees anything that you would like us to do differently.
Thank you, doing an excellent job.
Good afternoon, sir.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper, to approve the Hardin County Investment Policy as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, consider adoption of resolution twenty-six dash twenty-four, reappointing Mrs. Deborah McWilliams as the county's investment officer pursuant to the Hardin County Investment Policy. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, said goodbye Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We sure appreciate all you do.
Thank you, I appreciate you all.
Making sure that the public funds are invested, you know, so that we get as much as we can back on our, on our money.
Yes, sir.
On the public's money, thank you. Back up to number five, is authorization of pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Angela Gore, county auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for September the eleventh through the thirteenth are one million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Pre-approved expenditures for September the eighteenth through the nineteenth are one million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars and sixty cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today is eight hundred three thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-two cents. For total expenditures and transfers are three million, six hundred thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Gross payroll for September the twelfth, which was the retention stipends, was four hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred three dollars and seventy-seven cents. And the total transfers for that payroll was five hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred eight, one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Gross payroll for September the nineteenth was six hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. And the total transfers for that payroll was one million, seventy-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Gore. Have motion by Commissioner Young, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper. Mrs. Gore, I noticed that the total expenditures and transfers is a little high, but I know that we sent quite a bit of money on the mitigation grant to a couple of contractors, is that included in this amount?
I'm not certain, but we did pay our health insurance because of those, and that's what.
I think we had some other grant funds that we spent, so that's why it's a little higher than normally. But I think, I think we sent public management and lead around a half million dollars last week out of mitigation funds that came in from the GLA. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Gore.
Thank you.
Number eight, Katie Pace. Presentation by Mrs. Katie Pace, Extension Agent of Department Report from Texas A&amp;M Hardin County Agrolife Extension Office. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. It is our yearly interpretation time this morning. We have breakfast for all county employees. Kidos went around, handed out for those that couldn't make it down here, too. I'm not going to bore you with you listening to me about everything. I'm going to let the kids talk about their experiences in Hardin County four H. We did give you a binding copy of our interpretation like we do every year. If you have any questions after this, please just let me know, and I'll be happy to answer anything. Do you have any? Okay, it's a journal, you can start.
Good morning, my name is Audrey Moody. I'm a junior at Hardin Jefferson High School, and I'm a current member of the Hardin County four H Horse and Rider Club. I'm also the current president of that club. My main projects are the horse projects, but I am actively participating in food and nutrition, leadership, public speaking, photography, and fashion interior design. Like I said before, my main project is the horse project where I am an equine ambassador with four H, which is indeed a state office. Through that, I have been a Norman Borlaug Youth and Ag Scholar. I have been to the advocacy academy in Austin over the summer to learn about how to advocate for agriculture. I have also been an equine ambassador mentor for the future equine ambassadors, and also currently in a new program with four H called Build a Bill, where we are going to try and create and pass our own legislation through Austin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
My name's Aubrey, I go to Kemp's High School, I'm in Tempe, and I finished my two years of vet science for four H, and I'm still a person.
Great, awesome. You told me you weren't speaking this morning. I saw you out at two o'clock. Oh, it was her, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Allison Friesmer, I go into high school as well as small in the sixth grade. I'm a part of the Hardin County four H, and I show swine and poultry. And I'm going to be participating in the Hardin County Livestock Show.
That was awesome. Good morning.
My name is Sadie Friesmer, and I like to show swine, and I want to show goats. And it would be nice if people come up to the, um, Hardin County, um, what is it called? And, um, buy my animal.
I know the joke, yeah. Good morning.
My name is Alex Ranger, I am home to my mother, she goes to land.
Hilton Land, alright. Alright, when is the show, does anybody know? It's in October, I believe, right?
October twelfth is the auction.
October twelfth.
But the shows will be October tenth and eleventh.
Alright, this is Houston, I remember him.
My name is Houston, and I show goats, and I do robotics.
Robotics?
And I go to school.
Is that right? Well, that's all you got to say? The only guy with all the girls.
I've been paying for your time this morning. If y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Is there anything in this presentation that you wanted to go over with us? Anything you wanted to point out?
Um, all this is, is it is our yearly wrap-up numbers. It talks about the contacts that we've made. One of the biggest things that we did this year is we did partner with the Hardin County Forestry, or Ag and Forestry Association. And we did three different prospect shows with them. We raised twenty-four thousand dollars for them to do facility improvements, which is the barn that's down the road, if y'all know. Their goal right now, we're getting a quote for them to have a new ring for the livestock show, get new pins down there. They bought an arena drag, we bought a squeeze chute. There's tons of things that they're getting done out there, which we're really, really proud of that, that we're able to help them with that. So it's really just kind of combining forces with it. We continue to have our, you know, hunter education side of things. We also had the East Texas Wildlife Expo last year, which was also really big. And it has kind of furthered our kind of reach for the natural resource education, which is really a big thing in Hardin County. And Hardin County has tons of deer leases, and not only that, just we have a lot of whitetail breeders. We have a lot of people that are within the wildlife industry, you know, we can help. But that, that's, I think, kind of our highlights for the year, and the kids are always the best.
We agree. Well, talk, tell us how much the program's grown over the past couple of years, because I know you talked a little bit about that before, and we'd just love to hear it.
So, when I came, there was sixty-eight members, and that was it. We have grown to, last year we had a hundred and twenty-two enrolled members. We've also grown about seventy-five percent as far as our enrolled volunteers. I think when I started, there was maybe seven enrolled volunteers, and now we're up to thirty. We are in the middle of enrollment right now. Right now, we have, I think, eighty kids already enrolled, but enrollment just started September one. And we're also getting a bunch of kids that are enrolling before the livestock show, because we have to have that done. But it has been a tremendous growth. We now, when I came, we didn't have hardly any programs as far as anything different other than livestock. We had like a food and nutrition program, we had a couple sewing programs. But now we have archery, which has gotten better, we're going to have kids in Dallas in a couple of days so that they can do the State Fair Texas Archery Shoot. We have BB, we also have the vet science program, which is what Aubrey talked about. We have had eighteen graduates of that program. We have had five that have been certified through the state of Texas. That actually goes through the Texas Veterinary Board of Medicine, and they can get a certification as a certified CVA. But they can also just graduate the program and have the knowledge with them, too. It's a very helpful program, because it helps kids that think they want to be a vet figure that out before they spend all that money to go to vet school. We've had some kids that thought that was exactly what they wanted, and they got into the program and realized that was not what they wanted at all. They wanted to go a different avenue. So that's really great, and I, I think it's a really good service to them. I think the doest thing we have is robotics. We got a grant from the Texas four H Foundation this year, and we were actually able to get some robotics kits. We have kids that are going to compete this spring in the robotics contest that they hold at like Houston Livestock Show, and then we have our district four H contest and everything. So that is something very new and something that I'm very excited about. I don't know anything about it, our leader does all that. Don't ask me robotics questions or anything STEM related.
Houston might know.
He'll know, I don't, I don't know how to do any of that.
Well, if anyone's interested in four H or anything, any of the other programs, they can call this number on the screen.
Absolutely.
And if they want to volunteer, same, same way.
Yes, please.
Well, thank you, thank you, Tammy. Thanks to everybody that volunteers to help the agrolife program be so successful, and anybody else have anything else to say?
Is that Arena, the facility still named after Mr. John Blair?
Yes, sir.
I think it would be, and you might be already one step ahead of me, but I think it would be real important to discuss with your members who John Blair was and what he was for this community. If you have that information. If not, given me, I've got it.
Of course, we get reviews. I don't, I know we have how it was founded and everything through Temple Inland, but I don't think we have why everything got named the way it got named.
Okay, thank you. I think if we go to the livestock show, we have a good courthouse barbecue.
Thank you for all you do.
I appreciate it very much. In today's town, being a Bible livestock is totally out of the norm, you know? Because most people are more into electronics and that type of thing, things in the house, and this definitely gets them out and about, and they learn something out of it. So I think it's a great thing. It was a big part of my childhood.
Alright, thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much. Alright, number ten is to consider a request by Chief Juvenile Probation Officer Monica Kelly for approval of the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program Memorandum of Understanding for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Mr. Fallon, are you standing in for Chief Kelly?
Uh, yes, sir, I am.
Is there anything different about the MOU?
No, sir, it's just an agreement between the county, the Education Service Center, and the school districts to operate the JJP. It's just an annual, the only thing is different is some, just some grammatical things in the course of the year, but same, same memorandum of understanding for the last probably fifteen years that we operate the school.
Thank you, Jared. We have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by.
Me.
Commissioner Cook. I picked one, Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, consider and possibly approve the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendments regarding the fiscal year twenty-three surplus carryover funds for the R and B one and R and B four departments. Transferring two hundred eighty thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-four cents from the general road bridge fund balance. Hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven five eighty-three goes into the R and B one contingency line item, and one hundred eleven thousand, one thirty-nine ninety-one goes into the R and B four contingency line item.
Please approve.
Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Cook, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, consider equivalent request by Sheriff Davis to amend the fiscal year twenty-four rule, law enforcement grants to budget as follows. All of these are coming from the corrections officers, salary, none of them is the amount of fourteen thousand, six twenty-nine. FICA taxes, eleven twenty-eight, health insurance, ten thousand, nine fifty-three, retirement, twenty-two forty-one, workers' comp, two hundred twenty-five dollars. State unemployment, twenty-five dollars, dental insurance, three hundred forty-one dollars, life insurance, thirty-five dollars, supplemental debt, twenty-four dollars, and firearms, three thousand dollars. Those funds will be transferred to the safety equipment line item, two thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars, and the auto purchase line item, the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars. We also need to create a new line item, zero three four, five six zero, five seventy-three, titled other equipment, and the amount going into that line item would be one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars if approved.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, said goodbye Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
In the past, Angela, haven't we stated we will not move money from salaries into other line items?
Without budget approval, a budget amendment approval by the court, and that's what he's asking for today.
Okay, alright.
And Candace might could answer this better than I can, but he had some money budgeted for salaries, I think it was for corrections officers, and he hired them as corrections officers in the grant funds, but then he had two positions come open in his general fund budget, so he moved them there, and that left money available to grant funds that need to be spent, and that's why he's asking to move it into the operations line items, is that right?
Correct.
And I'm good with that, I've just, in the past, been told this.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to purchase a two thousand eighteen Nissan Rogue, VIN number ending in three zero six three, from Silly Motor Company, in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars, and funding the purchase with the rural law enforcement grants funding to be paid out of line item zero three four, five six zero, five seven four, auto purchase.
Certainly.
Have motion by Commissioner Cook, said goodbye Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cooper to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows. Create a new line item, zero one seven, six two one, five five four, titled capital improvements, and then transfer five thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars out of materials and supplies, and two thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars out of building, building materials and repairs into this new line item for a total amount of eight thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Young to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows. Create a new line item titled equipment rentals, zero one seven, six two three, four six one, and transfer seven thousand dollars out of materials and supplies into the new line item. Have any motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, discuss considering possibly dissolve the Alternative Dispute Resolution Center effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four at the request of the county judge, due to not being able to come to terms to properly establish an ADR in Hardin County. Just real quick, Judge Ingram had a great idea. He knew about some money that was being collected by the county clerk and the district clerk that would fund an Alternative Dispute Resolution Center. Judge Ingram is a mediator, and he wanted to run the center. I think we all thought it was an excellent idea, but there was a local attorney that complained that that was a conflict of interest. County attorney spent quite a bit of time researching that and determining that it was. So we looked for some alternative ways to set up that Alternative Dispute Resolution Center. There's just all kinds of issues as far as finding personnel to run it, and the amount of money it would take to do it versus what we're getting in. I mean, Judge Ingram, I think, was going to run it, and there wouldn't be much cost, but to, to do it the way it would have to be done, we'd have to come up with more money to put with the money we're getting from the collections to make it happen. We'd have to find a place for it. It was just a lot of issues that, there were more problems than there were answers to those problems. So we've never got it up and running. The auditor says we need to dissolve it and send that money back to the state, and that's what this is on here for. Have motion by Judge McDaniel, said goodbye Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Mr. Cooper, anything you want to say about it?
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with the rest of the court and the auditor, but I voted against it because I don't need no local attorney telling me what to do.
I don't disagree with you. I hate that he came up that way. It was an excellent idea, but we had the same issue there with people who are elected, and we set those salaries, we published those and everything, and then trying to pay them to do a different job was an issue there, and there were all kinds of other issues with it. But I don't disagree with what you said. Number sixteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Regina Bolton, Health Inspector, to accept a donation from Blackpin Pipeline in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the annual Hardin County Courthouse Christmas tree lighting, and then credit that amount to line item zero one zero, three six seven, one oh one, donations, courthouse tree lighting. Mrs. Bolton, does anybody hear from Blackpin?
It was supposed to be here, no, it's in.
Alright, well, we do have this letter from Leslie Kelton, the senior project manager for Blackpin Pipeline, talking about the donation. And if the court agrees to accept that, I guess he'll get with you and present that check.
Certainly.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to execute care coordination memorandum of understanding agreement renewal between Scent of Top Center and Hardin County Health Services. Is there anything new in the agreement this year? Good morning.
Good morning. The only thing new is, at first it was a mobile unit that they had out there, and they moved it, so now they're inside the annex.
Okay, so when people come to obtain services from Scent of Top, they're in the annex?
Yes.
And that's going to remain?
Um, I don't know if they're going to continue the way, because they're there every day now.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't know if they're going to change the hours, but we're going to work something out where they can come at least once a week.
Okay, sounds good.
Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There's something going on with my camera, so everybody can't see you, and they can't see me either. Just thought I would bring that up. Thank you. Number eighteen, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to sign the twenty twenty-five County Choice Silver Retiree Medical Program Renewal Offered by Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefits Pool as requested by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, HR Director. Good morning.
Good morning.
Is there anything different this year with that program from last year?
No, sir, this is just a supplement that we offer our retirees. There's no cost to the county, and we only have three retirees that participate.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Number nineteen, consider approval of request by the District Judges of Hardin County, Texas, to adopt a jury selection plan of Hardin County pursuant to section sixty-two, point zero one one, Government Code. These are procedures for the selection of names of persons for jury service.
Certainly.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, said goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, consider approval of request by Mrs. Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to present results of bids received for county courtroom innovations to accommodate upgrades to courtroom video and audio and possibly award to successful vendor. Good morning, Mrs. Sims.
Bids were opened on September twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at two o'clock P.M. in the purchasing department. Pat Boyett and Kenley Burke were present. We received two. F and T Construction was seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars, and McKinnis Construction at one hundred and five thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars. We have to award to the lowest bidder.
Thank you.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper, to award the project to the lowest bidder, and just for the record, that'll be funded using ARPA funds, which is later down on the agenda to approve that allocation. Any other discussion?
What other upgrades other than audio and video?
Well, it's remodeling the courtroom, so they'll come in, we're going to redo the bench and everything that's up there at the front, replace flooring. Aaron might know better than I do what else they're going to do, and then they will, the audio upgrade, we've already approved the amount for that, and they'll do that in-house.
Yes, sir, it's also going to include trenching of the floors and stuff so we can hide the wires, no trip hazards. They're going to extend the, the galley area up, so the roofs and walls. They're going to relocate the jury panel to the other side to match the other courtrooms and stuff of that nature. It's a pretty good overhaul of that courtroom.
It would be, it's going to be nice. Yes, ma'am. I think there's some electrical work that's got to be done as well.
Yes, sir, there will be electrical work added, so there, there's electrical that's going to be running those channels in the floors, audio, video, wires, gagging. We'll have channels to run more wires in the future, that way we don't have to do anything if we add stuff to it later.
Thank you very much, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to present the results of bids received. Let me just do that. Twenty-one, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to present results of bids received for record preservation and shredding of documents located in the old Hardin County Hospital slash Annex Building and possibly award to successful firm or take other action as the court needs necessary. Mrs. Sims?
Bids were opened on August twenty-ninth, at two P.M. in the purchasing department. Myself, Stacy Aker, and Pat Boyett were present. For bidding purposes, we estimated about how many pages?
For bidding purposes, we estimated, uh, about how many pages of paper would be in a file drawer, file cabinet, which is around fifteen thousand. And so these bids are for one file cabinet. That's to scan, index, and shred onsite. Uh, US Imaging, their bid was thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
Per file cabinet?
Yes, sir. And Array is seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per file cabinet.
How many file cabinets did you say?
We estimated around two hundred and fifty. I don't know if it would be that many, um, for sure, but two hundred and fifty file cabinets would be over a million dollars even with the low bidder.
So almost two million. One million, nine thirty-one, two fifty. Aaron, how much is allocated to that? I think it's two seventy-five.
Yeah, well, it's two thirty, two seventy, somewhere. It's, it's less than three hundred thousand a thousand to that project currently.
So this is just to scan documents and shred them?
Scan, index, and shred, and onsite. That's a lot of the cost.
Onsite, that's, they, they basically send crews out, they put them up in hotels and stuff to, to scan all of our systems. It could be cheaper if we went out, uh, sent them out, uh, to get them scanned, uh, and, and then they would come back. I, I don't know the legalities of that, if, if we can do that on all the files. Uh, I'm sure there's some files that probably we can't.
I'll bet you the DA and the district clerk would probably have files that we can't do that.
You're correct.
Maybe the county clerk too.
Uh, and, and in turn, there's also, uh, some CGS-type compliant, uh, warehouses that also you could send them, they would scan them and they would keep them and store them for the retention period. And if someone found that there was an issue with that scan, they would go grab it, re-scan it in, uh, so that you would have all your stuff digitized. We wouldn't be paying for storage. Again, that's probably gonna cost around the same as, as having onsite people here to scan and, and shred and everything of that nature. Uh, so it's, it's very costly to do this.
Where are these two firms out of?
Votter Texas, Array is in Houston. I can't remember, US Imaging, I don't know if it's in Texas.
There's not anybody in Beaumont that does this?
There is not, sir.
If, uh?
There are some in Beaumont, if I remember correctly, that will take?
But not onsite.
Take them, but they won't do onsite.
Commissioner?
If the court decided to, uh, do as many as what money we have allocated for this, do you think, I mean, they probably bid on this per file cabinet, knowing the number of file cabinets we have, do you think they would still do it at this cost?
I think what we put it down as, uh, approximately that many file cabinets and there's no guarantee that there would be that many.
I mean, I don't know what other.
The grant administrator, uh, which is, uh, Trailer and Associates, when they were talking about this the other day, I, I, I knew it was gonna be close to a million, I didn't know it was close to two million, but, uh, she recommended that we think about maybe hiring two people to come in and just do it here, but that's probably a good idea, except who are they gonna work for? And then my thinking on that is each department that needs shredding, they work for that department head, get it done, and then move on to the next, but I just don't know the logistics of how that's gonna work. Plus, we're supposed to start demoing that building December first. Now to work for the county judge. I don't think so. I, my lord.
What is the, uh, timeframe, uh,
Well, some.
completion of?
I'll bring that up as well. Uh, when we started that, I told Aaron to make sure that the contractor knew that we were not approving any change orders. Because that's how those bids go, you know, they bid to do it for a certain amount, knowing there's, they're gonna get a bunch of change orders. Well, we're already at two and you see where we are, we hadn't even started doing very much. One of them is, uh, gonna have to be looked at. Like, we'll probably do it next Tuesday during the special meeting. There's an issue with the ground over there and Aaron's got a video he's had to show you, but it's, uh, when you, when you drive any equipment or even walk across that ground, especially in the afternoons, it's, uh, unstable. It's called something.
It's like your water.
And what, what's that called? It's called something. Anyway.
What's the source?
Uh, so water that is basically trapped in soil, the soil's no good, has the water trapped from the water table, so there's a clay layer on the bottom. The water's not able to evaporate all the way, so as the sun heats up that soil, brings it to the top and creates that water bed. Uh, I, I jumped on it and I, I did fall through luckily, but it, it literally is like a water bed.
Anyway, uh, the, Mr. Uh, Wall, Greg Wall, uh, suggested that we go another twelve inches deeper. That's a change order that we're gonna have to approve and so far we're waiting on the amount from the contractor and what that's gonna cost. I asked Aaron this morning to please have that by noon on Thursday, so we can bring it to court next Tuesday.
That's a three hundred thousand dollar project? What is that over there? Are we talking about the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How much, Candace? You're in the ballpark. I think it's around that amount.
It's a hundred and thirty.
And so, uh, if that change order was gonna be, you know, ten thousand or less, I was gonna tell him to go ahead and do it, approve it in court later, but, uh, Aaron says it may be more than that, so I said, let's just bring it to court and we'll go from there. Problem is now the project shut down, they're talking about de-mobbing equipment and all that, it's just always something.
And that's for the shredders?
No, this is just for, uh, to get that building built, so we can move everything from there. And instead of moving the stuff that can be shredded and, uh, scanned and shredded, we wanted to do that instead of moving it.
So if, if we went that route to where we did it ourselves, what's the process on the scanning portion of it? How, how do we do that? And, and maintain?
We would rent the equipment.
Okay.
Probably hire two people, come in and they would shred. And then Misty, uh, I think has a shredd, I mean, I said shred, but I meant scan. And then Misty has a shredding company that could probably come in and shred onsite like maybe once a week or something and get it shredded. But somebody's got to make sure that it's being scanned properly before we say it's done and before we shred anything.
So we can talk about that later. You recommend it?
Reject.
Reject.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Young to reject all bids, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Nothing's easy. Twenty-two, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to solicit bids for the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, her team safe room construction. Missy, you wanna talk about this? You're gonna bring it up. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper? And I'll second. And the reason we're doing this, we gave her permission last week to go out for bids on the HMGP grant portion of this, but she needs to have another solicitation for the funds that are being paid for the, uh, phase out of the ARCA money. So she's gotta have two separate solicitations, so we're authorizing her to do that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number twenty-three, consider approval of request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator, to possibly authorize an allocation of ARCA funds to renovate the county courtroom to manage the installation of the upgrade technology project previously approved by Commissioners Court with a total project cost not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-four, consider approval of request from Mr. Tupper to authorize an allocation of ARCA funding to purchase VetPro software to assist veteran services with providing direct and general support to veterans with a total project cost of four hundred and seventy-five. Four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Motion by Kirkendall, seconded by Cooper. Any discussion? Anything you want to say?
I'm just here to answer questions if anybody has any.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks.
Number twenty-five, consider approval of request by Mr. Tupper to possibly authorize an additional allocation of ARCA funding in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventeen cents for an increased final cost of the previously approved Lucas chest compression system and a LifePact fifteen defibrillator cardiac monitor with a Titan communication device for ESD number five in Sauer Lake due to a price increase for shipping, as well as four other items that were not included in the original quote. I was looking at the invoice, it looks like those are some lithium ion batteries and then a cable to secure the device in the back of the ambulance, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So many.
Have motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Number twenty-six, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials and department heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public. Any member of the court have any discussion items or announcements?
Well, it says non-agenda, but, um, I don't know if we can talk about it. On twenty-one, for the shredding and all that?
Yes, sir.
What is the next step now that we rejected bids and we've got a deadline, but to tear down the, I don't know?
Would y'all like us to put this on the October first agenda, so we could at least talk about it and try to get a path forward?
They're gonna demo it in December, you said?
Well, they're supposed to. They're set for December first, but they've already been told it may be pushed back, uh, and I don't think we've had any balk about that, but.
It'd be good.
Alright, so we'll put it on October first agenda. That brief meeting's getting longer. That's alright. We'll get some business taken care of. Anything else?
And I asked you, Jeff, if you want to put it on the regular agenda, I'm okay with that.
We could put it on October the eighth?
Yeah.
Do you, uh, do you want it handled sooner, Misty, Aaron?
It's due to the delays in the construction that, I mean, we do need to handle it and, and either allocate those funds elsewhere or, or come up with a project for this, this scanning. Uh, so whichever the court needs best to have forward is, is what I suggest, but, uh, the sooner the better.
Well, the options are, we gotta move what we have if we don't scan it and shred it and get rid of it, and then we gotta hopefully add enough room for all of it. Or figure out some way to get it scanned and shredded and gone, so that we can demo that building. One way or the other, it's gotta come out of there.
Yes, sir. And, and the new storage building roughly can make twenty-four, uh, hundred square foot extra space, but it's.
Everybody's already claiming space over there.
A- as we continue normal, everyday business, there's documents that are, are being stored, so it's gonna be an ever, ever, uh,
About this, what do y'all think about on the October eighth regular meeting that we have a workshop to discuss this and let's bring all the department heads and elected officials in to talk about that and let's try to determine what can maybe be gotten rid of, that, uh, some people want to keep some things that maybe we could see about getting rid of some things to minimize our costs and to, to, uh, accomplish what we're needing to do with getting everything out of that little hospital.
Sounds good.
That sound good to y'all? Sound good to y'all?
Yes, sir.
That's what we'll do. Laura, you got that?
Got it.
Alright. Any other discussion items or announcements? Any elected official or department head present have any discussion items or announcements or department, uh, reports? Alright. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all very much.